Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Can we have roll call, Mrs. Byram?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinturne.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to this superintendent, Dr. Daniel Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we are going to begin annual reorganization, and so we will accept nominations for Chair of the Orange County School Board for 2023.
I nominate Sherri Page for Chair, please.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion that the nominations for Chairman be closed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed saying no. Okay, so at this time, we have the outcome. We have one name, Ms. Sherri Page. I have a motion to elect Ms. Page as Chairman of the Orange County School Board for 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We will now have a roll call vote. Ms. Byram.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Ms. Quinturne.
Aye.
Trying to think of what to call you. Pro-Tim Chair. The clerk certifies the vote as follows: five yes votes, no-no votes. The resolution is approved by a 5 to 0 vote.
Thank you, Ms. Byram, and congratulations, Ms. Page, Chairman of the Orange County School Board for 2023.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I would entertain nominations for Vice Chair of the Orange County School Board for 2023.
I move to nominate Melissa Anderson as Vice Chairman.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I'll make a nomination to put forth Mr. Jim Hopkins.
Okay. Is there a second to that, these motions? To move forward?
Oh, second.
Okay. At this time, everybody with the intention of going forward with these two nominations, please say aye or nay. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. At this time, Melissa Anderson as Vice Chair. Is there a second to this motion as Ms. Anderson for Vice Chair?
Am I allowed to second myself? Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Madam Chair, could we have discussion?
Sure.
For this. My nomination for Melissa Anderson is because, as we know, elections are coming up this year, and just to give insurance that there is going to be a veteran, I mean, your Chair, your Chair, and Mr. Hopkins Chairs are all going to be up for election. And so on the off chance that no veteran members get reelected, I just want to ensure that there is some kind of ease of transition, so that way there is experience for leadership. So that's why I wanted to nominate Ms. Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Byram?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I think that's reasonable, and it's fine with me, so I'll let, I call for the vote on Vice Chair.
All right. He has called for the vote, Ms. Byram, for Melissa Anderson as Vice Chair.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Ms. Quinturne.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the resolution is approved by a 5 to 0 vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you. Ms. Anderson. All right. At this time, we need to have nominations for the clerk.
I nominate Laura Byram.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In elections of a deputy clerk?
I nominate Yvonne Dawson.
Yes, is there a second to this nomination?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Nominations. Congratulations, Ms. Byram and Ms. Dawson. So at this time, we can proceed on with appointments.
We need to do the meeting schedule as well.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's for the first Monday and the last Monday of each month at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Ms. Byram just reminded me that we need to the, establish the annual meetings, which are being held on Monday nights and at 7 o'clock. Is everyone in favor with continuing with this?
Byram.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, Mrs. Byram, we'll continue with that. Do you need that in a form of a vote, please? We need that in a form of a vote. Could someone please make a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Now, appointment of representatives to each thing. And Ms. Byram, can you put that up real quick? Because I know a few, but I don't know if I remember them all off the top of my head.
Got too many computers. I thought I was displaying. There we go. So these are who currently hold these positions, so.
Okay. So Mr. Hopkins is currently the voting delegate, and Ms. Quinturne is the alternate for Virginia School Board Association, the sibling. Mr. Hopkins is also sits at the table of the Blue Ridge Governor's School, and Melissa Anderson is the alternate. Head start is Ms. Quinturne. Orange County Educational Foundation is myself. Board of Supervisors Financial Committee is myself and Mike Jones. And then Piedmont Regional Education is myself and Mr. Hopkins, prep. And the Board of Supervisors School Board CIP Committees. I think Mike had made his wishes and that Ms. Anderson move up to that, and that he would take alternate in that position. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, I'd be fine.
Okay. Is everyone currently happy and okay fulfilling the roles that they are in right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So can we have a, do we really need, do we need this in a form of a motion too, Ms. Byram? Do we need?
Yes, we can do it as a group, but it doesn't, we do need a motion.
Okay. So with that being said, can I entertain a motion?
I move to accept the appointment of representatives with the amendment of the Board of Supervisors School Board CIP Committee.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And then the provisions of the annual notifications, which we've all been given a copy of this, and so we have to, I guess we need to make a do we have to legally vote that we've been given copies of this as well, Laura?
No, ma'am. This will serve as
Notification?
Notification. And if any of you would like them printed, please just let me know, and I'll print them, because I think FOIA and the Conflict of Interest Act are rather large documents.
Okay, all right. So, and then, location of the Orange County School Board policies. They are on our board docs that we can find, and we can easily go to and click there and look up a policy. Also, if I am not mistaken, we still do have hard copies somewhere, correct, Laura?
No, we're no longer required to, but we can make hard copies for anyone who doesn't have access to a computer.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, we can go down. And now we are at School Board Code of Conduct.
Madam Chairman, I make a move. We approve the Code of Conduct as presented.
Okay. And may I have a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, second.
I just wanted to make a point that taking into consideration under number eight was presented, if memory serves me correctly, due to the misunderstanding of the difference between laws and governor mandates, and there is conflict. So it's, I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're going to be breaching our Code of Conduct if there's two conflicting laws, mandates, et cetera. So I would like to keep the in accordance with, or I'm sorry, taking into consideration.
Okay. Other discussion?
Well, it was my, last year I put that in, so I would definitely support that if that's what the Board wants to do. I could support the other one also, because I'm not, I'm not sure how legally binding in accordance with. It depends on the word accordance. I don't deal with that every day, so
Okay.
Maybe, maybe Ms. Quinton can say. I don't, I don't know the legal binding of, of what in accordance with means.
What was the original wording of the BSBA Code of Conduct? Do you remember, Laura?
I think it was enforcing and upholding all laws.
Enforcing and upholding was the original words there. Are you still, are you not comfortable with that, Mr. Hopkins?
Well, I think, Ms. Quinton brings up a good point, because legally, well, I shouldn't say that, but
Information in accordance with means to be compliant with applicable rule and all its terms, conditions, limitations, and exceptions as applicable.
So that would go along with all state laws, state regulations, and court order pertaining to school, correct?
I mean, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding would be, it would be similar, you know, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other with, in accordance with, or uphold and enforce.
I think when you say taking in consideration, that you're, you're implying that you pick and choose which ones you want to follow.
What if we put the language in good faith?
In good faith, in accordance with?
In good faith with all laws, state regulations.
I'm good with that.
What, yeah, I, I think I can do that. Say it again, Mike?
Just in good faith.
Right. That sounds good.
So I move to accept this Code of Conduct with the amendment of in good faith in place of in accordance with.
Okay. All right. Can we have a motion?
That was my motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Sorry. All right. Now, we need to go over the certification of rules of order, which is always, we have always followed the Roberts Rules of Order. So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this, that we continue following the Roberts Rules of Order, please.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now authorization of the signature and absent of the Division Superintendent. And you can see Mr. Honigar, who is the Chief Financial Officer, and Mrs. Susan Ailer, who is the Director of Special Education, to be, to fill in if Dr. Hornick is away or cannot be reached. So.
I move to accept the recommendation to approve Mr. Honigar and Mrs. Susan Ailer to sign our authorized department documents in the absence of Dr. Hornick.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is accepted. All right. Now, on to the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the approval of the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And dropping on down to that would be minutes and the financial reports from, let's see. November 28, December, and the monthly food service reports. I'd entertain a motion, please.
I move to accept the approval of the minutes from November 28, '22, December 22 financial report, and the monthly food service report.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now for the monthly operating bills. I do believe that Mr. Hopkins.
Yes, I looked at that, and I had, I had one question, and it may not be able to be answered tonight, but we, we paid a bill to Proximity Learning, and I, this is basically a website that offers instruction through the computer. In other words, it's alternative. I was just wondering what services we're using from them and so forth, but I, I, I think I would just like to get that information from Dr. Honigar at a later time. Obviously, I don't expect anybody to speak to it tonight. But that said, I make a motion to approve the bills for $4,950,791.22.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now, let's see, we're down to recognitions, and I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Hornick.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. At this time, we're going to invite Dr. Oliver Egger from Locust Grove Elementary School, and we have some recognition of a staff member and some students this evening.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. With the Board's permission, I'd like to start with the student recognitions, if that's all right. So I have three special students here this evening that I'd love to call up, up by Ms. Downs over there, Hayden Washington, and Hunter Fletcher, and Haley Scott. If you guys could go up there by Ms. Downs for me? So these students are the three finalists at Locust Grove Elementary School from our Geography B. We had 11 students who qualified and agreed to participate in the Geography B, which that in of itself takes a lot of bravery and courage to stand up in front of your peers and your teachers, and be able to answer trivia questions like you're on Jeopardy, and, and show what you know about geography. These students had to answer questions related to Virginia and US geography, and I will tell you, if you ever need to know a state capital, ask these three, because they can take care of it for you. But they did an amazing job, and I'm just so proud and grateful for their participation. I also want to thank their teacher, Ms. Downs, for organizing and setting up the Geography B for these students. They did an amazing job, and thank you so much for being brave enough to participate. And these are our first, second, and third place winners for Locust Grove Elementary School. I also have a staff member that I wanted to be able to recognize tonight, my head custodian, Mr. Nathan Denning, if you can come up for us? So Mr. Denning is my head custodian at Locust Grove Elementary School. He's an amazing team leader, and he has turned, he has turned the building and grounds at Locust Grove Elementary so that they are looking like we are back when the school was first built. It's in amazing condition. It's looking beautiful and safe for our students and staff to be able to provide a great environment for teaching and learning. And above and beyond that, Mr. Denning has an incredible connection with our students. You know, it's one thing to come in and do the job that you're expected to do with maintaining the building and grounds. It's a whole nother thing to be a role model for the students, and be a friendly connection, and someone that our students can, can look to for, for friendship and guidance. I have one student in particular who earns Nathan breaks every day because he needs that kind of motivation, and Mr. Denning gives him exactly what he needs, so that he can come to school, learn, participate, and work towards becoming the best version of himself. And so that has to be recognized in a public forum like this, because Mr. Denning goes above and beyond for our school and our kids. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Congratulations to our recipients, and thank you, Dr. Oliver Egger, for coming out this evening. And that's all for recognitions, Madam Chair.
Okay. And at this time, I will open public comment. Ms. Byram, has anyone stand, stand up, signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Laura Daniel and Mr. Alan Daniel.
I'm just going to give them a minute to leave.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. At the last School Board meeting, it was discussed all the progress and obstacles associated with CTE. And while it was a very thorough presentation, the only thing missing was the details of the increased program that has included over the years, including some of the first programs in the state. Which is rather funny, because according to Ms. Quinturne's platform, Orange didn't have any CTE platforms and, or programs, and she was going to change that. I think the presentation at the last meeting showed how CTE has been a part of Orange County school systems for the past 15-plus years, and it just goes to show how little Ms. Quinturne and Ms. Anderson knew about our school system. Which brings me to my next point. A gentleman spoke in the last public comment, who is actually here today, demanding answers on why Quinturne's homophobic resolution didn't pass. Ignoring the fact that it attacked the LGBTQ+ community, the simple fact remains that the Orange County school system already has things in place, including policies that limit kids to sexually explicit material, and gives parental notification, including an opt-out option. But Ms. Quinturne and Ms. Anderson wanted to argue parental rights, giving the notion that parents didn't have a say. Ironically, here's where their lack of knowledge in our school system proved again. Parents have had rights. There's nothing new. Parents have had a right to examine curriculum. They're given the right to opt out of stuff, including sexually explicit material, which is only at the high school level, and they have to go through several steps. But even if it's not explicitly stated, most parents and principals are willing to work with parents within their means. Parents can even go into the classroom and observe. This is nothing new. And just as always, the school system and School Board gives a period of examination of new curriculum, and often gives public comment before adopting. Just because you don't know how Orange County has worked in the past, or perhaps just because you're new to the county, it doesn't mean that your perception of things is correct. In fact, your lack of knowledge, including the lack of knowledge of your position, has shown during your campaign and during the last year. Luckily, you have a new superintendent that's willing to work with you to give you a better understanding. So Ms. Quinturne's resolution wasn't about parental rights, at least in regards to sexually explicit material. Ms. Quinturne's resolution was about parental notification, about gender identification and sexual preferences, and chasing some phantom problem that Orange County is giving kids puberty blockers and hormone replacement therapies, which, by the way, they're not. In fact, our school system is one that you have to jump through several hoops just in order for your kid to get a Tylenol, and that's just Tylenol. Don't worry, parental notification is part of that, too. So yes, there's a very serious threat to our kids in our school system with that resolution. And the fact that parents stood up here, you had a parent stand up here to a public comment and stated he disowned his son simply because he was gay. And despite what Ms. Quinturne and Ms. Anderson says, no, not all parents know what's best for their kids. That's why we have things such as car seat laws and child protective services. So why don't we focus on things that we actually need in our county, such as teacher pay, especially those with the extra stipends for the extra clubs that they cover? Thank you.
Dr. Hornick and members of the School Board, I wanted to come before you this evening and present to the Board my thoughts upon the new year and my desires for the School Board moving forward. Last year, we had difficulties and disagreements on issues ranging from masks, the threats of COVID, diversity, inclusion, equality, critical race theory and its derivatives, the rights of transgender students, and others in the LGBTQI+ community. We saw two resolutions, one of which attacked looking at history through a thorough view, and taking into account all factors that affect the outcomes experienced, and not just through the lens as seen by Eurocentric Caucasians. This one also attacked correlating what we see happening in modern day and the influences from the events in the past. The other, under the guise of parental rights, attacked the right to privacy of transgender students, and threatened the safety of many of the LGBTQI+ community members. This resolution was delayed once and shot down a second time. Although there is talk about getting it passed from some despite draft policies the resolution was designed to support, is facing legal battles, including the Joint Commission on Administrative Rules, JCAR, Commission in Richmond voted to object to the 2022 model policy Rules, JCAR, Commission in Richmond voted to object to the 2022 model policy and not support it on 19th of December, 2022. We also saw talk about the school prayer and the form of speaking to the lawyers about potentially adding an invocation before school board meetings. I'm glad we have not seen any additional movement on that, as if you allow one religion in to be represented, you have to allow all of the others, even those that may be the opposite of what you believe. It is my hope that this year, we can move forward and make Orange County an example of what school should be, on which each student comes to school and feels accepted for who they are, that the school can be a safe environment where focused on learning and education and not on political fallacies and imaginary boogeyman supported by straw man arguments. It is my hope that Orange County can be a community in which, where no matter your religion, Christian, pagan, Judaism, Islam, Buddhism, humanist, atheist, et cetera, that you would feel accepted in Orange County public schools. No matter the color of your skin, national origin, immigration status, that you feel accepted in Orange County public schools. No matter your sexual orientation or gender identity, that you feel accepted in Orange County public schools. As I did last year, I will continue to fight any resolution or policy that causes harm to marginalized groups, but it's my hope that the board acts with compassion and empathy and takes inclusion, diversity, and equity seriously in 2023. The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats the most vulnerable members. Mahatma Gandhi. Thank you.
Ms. Byram, has anyone else signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that no one else has signed up, I will declare public comment closed at this time. Thank you very much, and I will turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Only one item for reports and recommendations this evening, and this is the consideration for the performance contract for the upgrades at Gordon Barber, that you heard information from ABM on the 19th work session. And so we have representative from ABM here, as well as Mr. Arnold, if there's any other follow-up questions, and that's all, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there any questions this evening?
I do have a few questions, actually. The, I guess, the outline of the dollar amount, so the 1.25 million, is that the only out-of-pocket we have? The rest is being reimbursed over the 20-year or 30-year layout? Is that correct?
That is correct, Ms. Anderson. It is a 20-year payback, and all other than the 1.25 million upfront, or about $94,000 a year over the 20 years. Those are the only amounts that come out of our fund.
Okay. And that's being taken care of by the Esser Fund? Is that correct? Or is, how is that?
If we do it over the 20 years, we can do it out of our capital budget.
But the down payment, the 1.25? He's not here.
I don't, I don't remember either. And I don't think I had that with me.
Yeah, I think that was something we were going to request from the county, if not then we would find it.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Berry.
Okay. All right.
So until we have that approval, is this something that we need to vote on tonight, or do we need the approval first?
Well, I think we, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, they're in the process of already being in Gordon Barber and working at this time, correct?
Well, the current need is to order the equipment. The work at Gordon Barber would be done over the summer. If we put in a time, we need to order it soon.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Berry, so you three help me here. It seems like there was some discussion that that could be used from Esser Funds, but it was in discussion as well with the county is taking some of their money from...
That was my understanding. The purpose here is to get permission to move forward with those discussions.
With the county.
To then find funding for that.
Okay. So since that, we will be in discussions with the county, Melissa, I would say if we could go ahead and get this approved and move forward, because either way, probably the money would either come out of our funds or the county will fund it.
Okay. So, I mean, worst-case scenario, what if they come back and say no, or they don't have the funds?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Gotcha.
All right. With that, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, as far as the financial part. My other question is, as far as other alternatives to the heat pump type units that we're putting in each classroom, was there something else that could be used, possibly not using so much electric, but...
The VRF system that we're proposing for Gordon Barber is more efficient than the water source heat pumps, even the newer ones being used at Orange Elementary.
Okay.
Both of those are considerably more efficient than those they have.
Okay. And as far as extreme temperatures, we wouldn't have any issues with...
Not at all.
Because it's more controlled, correct, Doug?
Correct.
Okay.
I did a little reading on this just to try to get my head around what we were doing, too. And one of the, one of the big savings is that you lose a lot of your energy efficiency when you have these ducts, when you have big ductworks going, you know, you have one boiler and then you have ductwork running all over the school. So the industry likes what this technology is because they say it's much more efficient and you don't lose the energy loss that you do through ductwork. I'm just repeating what, what they're saying. It seems reasonable to me. This is up-to-date technology. I mean, you couldn't have done this five years ago.
Well, and I will say again, working with the two contracts that we have had in the past, ABM has certainly lived up to their, their end of the bargain. So, I mean, we can definitely attest to that. So with that, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion unless you want to. I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's all right. I just had a, I did some math, and $94,000 is actually 1.88 million versus the 1.25. So is that with the financing through the company, the additional?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Can I add one more thing? Can we just, can we bring it back to the table, not necessarily for a vote, but bring it back once the board of supervisors approve and we determine which, which ways we're going as far as financing it, whether it's Esser and the dollar amounts that Esser's covering and the dollar amount that the board of supervisors is covering?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll let us know.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
So, all right. So, okay, Mike?
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead, and I'll make that motion that we approve it as presented.
Okay. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you. All right. And with that being said, we're down to close session certification, please. All right. Hang on. And I will see if I can't find it.
For you. It's, it's on here. Okay, you got it? The person who went to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're in closed session. Go back here.[1143.88]
Okay. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintern.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: Five yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Disposition of personnel actions, Dr. Horton?
Yes ma'am, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the personnel actions as presented, as well as the personnel addendum as presented in closed session.
Can I have a second? I move to adopt the recommended approval of the personnel agenda and addendum to include retirement, resignation, employment, termination, transfer, and salary adjustment of staff and coaching appointment, um, as well as the personnel addendum.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And at this time, um, any comments from anyone?
See, when's, when's the next, do we have any work sessions this?
Yes, the 23rd is our next work session.
The 20th?
The 23rd.
Okay.
Alright.
And I won't be here for that, just to make sure there's no quorum issues.
Okay.
Quorum qualms.
I like that. Alright, um...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me look at my calendar. Okay, 23rd's good for me.
Alright, alright, so, and then we have the Capitol Conference at the end of the month.
Mm-hmm, I believe the 30th.
So, alright, with that being said, there is no other business, I will adjourn this meeting. You're welcome.